I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone, and welcome everyone watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, all of the team is physically present tonight, so that's nice to have everyone here, both on the Village team and the board. We would be at Item 4, Approval of the Minutes from the Board of Trustees Meeting on June 21st, 2022. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Are there any corrections to the minutes or discussion on the motion? Hearing not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Just an announcement before we get to public comments. One of our family members here in the Village, in the Public Works Department, Jim Bartley and his wife are going through a battle with cancer. Jenny Bartley is. Jenny grew up here in Peoria Heights, and there's a fundraiser this Saturday. I'm going to ask all of you and everyone in the community to try and step out and support that. Before I go any further, I want to thank Rob Matheson and Curtis Spence, who really have stepped up. Curtis in the Public Works Department, spearheading this effort, and Robbie, who I called and immediately agreed to help in any way possible. Lindsay Bartley, Lindsay is here tonight with the Bartley family. Thanks for being here. If you would tell us a little bit about what's going to happen Saturday.
Sure. I did take some notes on my phone, so I'm not looking through Facebook while I'm talking to you, just so you know. My name is Lindsay Faulkner. My parents are Jim and Jennifer Bartley. Those names might not ring a bell for most of you, but I hope by the end of this, it will at least ring differently. I come from a very tight-knit family. Most of us reside here in the Peoria area. My mom attended Kelly Avenue Grade School. She was a Heights graduate, class of '81. My grandma, Lucy Harris, she still lives in the same house on Best Street that she's been in for 60 years now. And my stepdad, Jim, he is the foreman for the Public Works Department here for the Village. Our roots run deep here, long before I was even born. My mom was diagnosed with stage IV pancreatic cancer about two months ago. This is after two previous cancer diagnoses. She was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2017, and she was diagnosed with thyroid cancer in 2020. None of these cancers are related, but it has currently spread to her lungs, her spine, her ribs, and her hips. She's traveled to Anderson Medical Center in Houston for consults, for tests, and treatment plans that would be carried out locally. As I'm sure you've gathered just from that short summary, our family is no stranger to this horrible disease, as we've been here before. However, now she is truly in for the fight of her life. This type of cancer is extremely aggressive, and it is oftentimes deadly. From my understanding, you know, the Heights has treated Jim well, just in his time of being with the Village, employed by the Village. However, due to potential future travel expenses, out-of-pocket medical costs, anything that might arise, it's our desire to alleviate that stress from my parents, from my family during this time. Humbly and respectfully, I'm asking the Village if they would be willing to help in any way that they're able. And just as I stated at the beginning, that I come from a close-knit family, and I'm asking the Village family to come alongside and help stand in the gap for mine. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and we'll see you Saturday. And rest assured, we need everyone's prayers in the community, but one of the last things a family should have to go through at a difficult time like this is a financial difficulty. And while we have terrific health insurance here for Village employees, the family's incurring a lot of outside expenses and travel and loss of income, so I think we all understand that. So if any way you can help this family by showing up Saturday or helping in any other way, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, we'd be at comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. All right, we have two, two right here. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Kevin Lowry. I live at 805 East Toledo. I'm having an issue in my neighborhood. On the intersection of Illinois and Toledo, nobody stops at that stop sign at all. I've talked to a couple cops. They said that, yeah, they'll cruise around. Haven't seen one ever since. So I have a little one, actually I have two little ones. This is Anastasia, she's three. Her grandma and grandpa live across the street. We go there every night for dinner. Every night, there's about five or six cars, 60, I don't know, 50, 60 miles per hour going down Toledo. It's summertime, kids are outside riding their bikes. I just don't want somebody to get hurt. And then it happens even worse when the kids are coming home from school. So is there any way, Dustin, that we can get a patrol guy to go around the neighborhood, at least? I don't know. I know the Village is pretty decent size, so, and I know that your guys, your guys are super busy. I just need help.
Definitely. We can take care of it. If you could, I'd like to get your information after the meeting, so I'll reach out to our officers and come up with, I'm not sure if you have, is there a timeline that you're talking about? Is it a certain time of day? But we'll get all this information from you after the meeting.
Okay.
But there's some things we can do to help you. Obviously, we can't be there 24/7.
Absolutely, I understand that.
But there are some things we can do to slow, slow traffic down, so if you could just stick around after the meeting, and I'll get all your information, and I'll be in touch with you tomorrow to come up with a plan, okay?
Okay.
And if you're not able to stay, you can call one or both of us, or email us, but if you're able to stay, Chief will get on this right away.
Do you think we can stay?
Yeah, we can stay. Well, thank you.
Could I ask a question real quickly, Mayor? I have a feeling that the officers do a great job of patrol, but I have, this happens all over the Village, and as soon as you guys aren't there, someone's going to run right through that stop sign. We all know this. I know we've, in the past, shied away from the idea of using speed bumps, but could we, during the summer months when people are speeding, put down a temporary speed bump that can be lifted up right before winter? Because obviously, they're not speeding 60 miles an hour when the road's covered with ice. So if we could put down a temporary speed bump, something that they have to slow down, then that would put a lot less stress on your guys to catch everyone that does it.
And when we discussed that in the past, a couple of things that were brought up. One, of course, you know, we put them in certain areas. If it's, if it's a situation where we rotate them, how easier are they to put down and pick up? Then that starts to be a manpower issue for Public Works. And also, you know, the cost of them as well. I know that that was brought up, if we wanted to put them throughout the Village. So I mean, there was a lot of discussion. I don't really think we came to a consensus of how that would look, so we just, it was just dropped. But I'll do a little bit of research to find out, you know, the answer to those questions. But something, because it would, anything we can do, whether it be that speed trailer to help out, because we don't have, you know, a typical call load for the Village of Peoria Heights Police Department is a little bit different than a typical call load in Chillicothe or Bartonville or Metamora. So, you know, but it is important to us. So we will, let me look at some different options.
Okay.
And see what we can, we can do, but my, I should say, the short-term answer is to take care of this gentleman's problem now, and get some cars down there, at least, you know, in
Certain the trailer.
Certain times of the day. And the trailer, it, that helps in other ways, as far as, it does average speed, does traffic count, so we'll, we'll gain, you know, a lot of information off the speed trailer, not so much the speed itself. It's information we gather after it, so.
So would you explain, even though an officer is not on site, if someone sees a person run a stop sign, for instance, and they get the license plate, what?
Well, they can still contact. With any moving violation, give us a call, and we can follow up. We've had a lot of, a lot of residents in the Heights do that, whether it's caught on a Ring camera or something like that, so they don't hesitate to call us, but we need to get the phone call, you know? But I'll, let me get the information from you after the meeting, and if you can't, you can, you can find my email address online. Send me an email with all your information, and I'll be in touch, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks for being here tonight. Anything else, Trustee Weisenberg?
Maybe.
Well, I was just going to say, I don't believe there's a stop sign at Boulevard in Toledo, and that could slow down the traffic if you
If they'll stop at it.
Right, exactly. That's true, I was thinking the speed. That's true, they don't stop there.
Well, it might be part of a bigger solution.
I have seen, when we put them at the Francis and Glen Elm, a lot of cars do not stop, but they do slow down. So it, I might as well just say, "slow down," but, so it does sometimes slow them down, but I sit there and watch people all day long just run right past that stop sign.
Yeah, then they speed up and come turn on long view and just fly on down. There's a lot of kids in that neighborhood.
There are a lot of kids.
And Toledo is barely a lane and a half.
Right.
Never been very big.
And like I said before, the Police Department does a wonderful job, but we don't have enough officers to stop everyone at every stop sign. And the only way to get people to stop is to put a barrier in their way, so they have to stop. So I think it would be a good solution, assuming that it's not too costly and not too stressful in the Public Works.
Anyone else? Anyone else here tonight to address the board? Public comment going once, twice, closed, and we'll move on to Item 6. It's an update on the Metropolitan Airport Authority of Peoria by Kevin Shields. I think we all know Kevin. He's the owner of Heritage Square and was recently appointed last year to be our representative on the Airport Authority. So welcome, Kevin.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I think Mayor said, if you all recall, that I was appointed to sit on the Metropolitan Airport Authority of Peoria. And what I want to do is at least give an update to you guys once a year. I think the airport is a fantastic bellwether for what's going on in the economy. You get a lot of great airlines and airports are, they're a lot like insurance companies. They're just incredibly data-driven entities, so you get a really, a lot of fantastic information, whether, you know, you see certain things with leisure travel happening, certain things with business travel happening, certain things with freight happening, so. And I think that the Village is also in a very unique situation, because I think the Metropolitan Airport Authority is a very unique municipal corporation in the state. And so what I wanted to do was, and I promised that I'd keep it under five minutes, so I may talk a little faster than usual, but I doubt you guys will complain. There's a tremendous amount of history in Peoria with, with flight. If you remember back to your grade school days, 1903 was the first flight. There was a flight in Peoria in 1910, so that's seven short years later, and it's, it's the Wright Brothers who sent an instructor here, and in 1910, the first flight happens here. A year later, the very first transcontinental flight ever stops in Peoria. Lindbergh, in the 20s and 30s, is stopping in Peoria on his St. Louis to Chicago route. Now, it wasn't at the airport, because we didn't have an airport, but it was out at, basically where the shops at Grand Prairie was, and it was just a grassy strip with a little building. So there's really a tremendous amount of history here. The Airport Authority, or I should say, the airport started in, I think it was the 50s, late 30s was when it started, but it was, it was about 250 businessmen, and maybe women at that time, got together and started the airport. And 50, in the 50s, it was handed over to the Park District, and then it was eventually given to the Metropolitan Airport Authority. What makes the Metropolitan Airport Authority unique, and the Village of Peoria Heights unique, is Airport Authorities are statutory creations. They're municipal corporations that are created by state statute. What is unique about Peoria is, Peoria is specifically called out in the statute. Everywhere else it says, here's what, here's how you can create an Airport Authority, here's how you can create a Metropolitan Airport Authority, but specifically, they created the Metropolitan Airport Authority of Peoria. So it's a little different, the rules are a little different, but there are nine commissioners that, that run the Airport Authority. Five of them are appointed by state representatives, four are appointed by local mayors. That's Peoria, Chillicothe, Bartonville, and us. At the time when they created it, it was any town that essentially paid into the, that was within the authority, paid into the authority, that had over 5,000 citizens. So I think there have been a couple that have dropped out. I think I was told maybe West Peoria had a member at one point, and they lost it. So that's one thing to think of in terms of our population, is if we ever drop below 5,000 for any reasons, we'll, we'll lose that seat, and I think it's an important seat to, to hold on to. If you look at the numbers out of the airport, they probably surprise you. Since the new terminal was built in 2011, we've had 6.5 million people fly through that airport. It's about 450,000 passengers in 2021, which was actually, as you probably would guess, a little bit of a down year. 20 million pounds of freight, 45,000 flights a year going through there. So again, it's a really, it's a bright spot in Peoria. It's a bright spot in the economy. If you look at us compared to even Bloomington, or Moline, or Springfield, our numbers are pretty good. And some of that is, we're an international airport, so we, and we've done some things recently to even make ourselves more attractive, that I won't bore you with. It's garbage disposal for international flights and things, but, but it's made us more attractive. That has been paying dividends in terms of getting additional flights coming into Peoria, as well as private hangars. People looking at us who fly internationally, who have private planes, saying, wow, if I cannot stop and drop off my regulated garbage disposal and just do it in Peoria, I might build a $20 million hangar there. And, and that's not hypothetical, that's what we're, we're dealing with right now. So what most people want to know at this point is, where are we compared to where we were two years ago? 2019 was the peak year for us, and going back to 2011, every year got better and better and better. 2020 was obviously a catastrophe for our numbers, 2021 was a little better. Right now, we're at about 90% of pre-pandemic levels. If you look at airlines like Allegiant, they're larger than they were pre-pandemic. A lot of the drop-off is in business travel, and it's, that's, that's still where it is. If you guys have flown or been paying attention to the news, you probably know, it's, it's really difficult to hold on to flights right now. Airports are losing, everyone's losing frequency. You know, if you were going up to Chicago 28 times a week, now you're going 14, if, if you're lucky. So everyone's losing frequency, but a lot of airports, especially airports near our size, are losing routes altogether. That's happening, I think it happened in Davenport recently. We've been very lucky. We lost frequency, but we have not lost any routes, and we're, the staff, the administration at the airport is fantastic, Gene Olson, everyone over there is fantastic. They're in constant communication with the airlines to make sure that we hold on to, to those routes the best we can. So things are looking good. We could absolutely produce more traffic. The problem is, is obviously, we have a pilot shortage right now, and a general label shortage. We can't fill jobs at the airport, although that's not stopping us from getting extra flights, but trying to add a flight right now, forget about it, it's not going to happen. I mean, the best what you're trying to do is just hold the line and not lose frequency or not lose a route. But the demand is certainly there, the airlines have told us that. They've essentially said, hey, if it was not for the pilot situation right now, we'd be looking at adding some of these destinations. That's my goal on there, is, is how do we induce some of these airlines to get those routes? And there's things you can do. There's things you can do, you can offer them guaranteed revenue on a flight, and if it drops below that, well, then you got to pay a little bit, but you weigh that against things like marketing and advertising, and, you know, if you can pick up a route where we know people are going and say, look, we'll guarantee you X amount, and we put $100,000 on the line. If you look at what we spent in advertising, I, I like those numbers. And the last time I think we did it, it didn't cost us a dime to do that. Just right now, we can't, we obviously can't do that. So, but, but that's where we're at right now. The demand is there, and, and we're having conversations with those airlines, doing our best to say, okay, when things ease up, and that pilot lag is long, it's two years. When everyone takes early retirement in 2020, and you got to train new guys, they don't get trained in six months. So, you know, we're having those conversations to say, when, when things come back, you know, how do we get Delta back? How do we get, how do we get a flight, maybe some additional flights to places like Florida and, you know, Arizona, places that we already know people from Peoria are going, right? Construction-wise, if you've been out the airport, you may have seen, we had some terminal apron construction that you maybe, probably didn't see that. That makes us really attractive to airlines. It makes it easier for them to get in and out, and makes it quicker for them to do so. Again, they're very data-driven entities, so the quicker you can get them in and out, it's the better for them. And we did some parking expansion this summer as well, and maybe you noticed that. The big thing, obviously, is the new control tower. If, if, obviously, the new terminal was, was, was built in 2011, the only thing left from the old building is the old tower. That's the tower that was there from before. It's falling apart, shockingly so. And, and our federal representatives were fantastic. Everyone worked together, wrote us letters of support to try and get money for the Infrastructure Act, and we got more than we thought. So we got 15 million. The tower was designed six years ago, and at the time, it looked like it cost about 15 million. The new budget is 27 million. So now it's a situation of, we got the first amount, how do we get the second amount? Can we get that next year? If we don't get it next year, how can we pay for it? Because the control tower needs to be, it needs to be replaced. And so we're looking at that, but that's probably, that's probably the big thing you'll hear over the next couple of years from the airport, if there aren't additional routes being added, is construction on the control tower. It's a complicated process. There'll be, the new tower and the old tower operate together for a year, so they'll have both of them up, and then once all the kinks are worked out, old tower comes down, and then it'll just be the new tower. So I guess what I would convey to you is, this is, again, this is a unique position for Peoria Heights to have a seat on this board. And I think that, I hope I can keep coming back here to you guys, maybe once every six months or once a year, and kind of update you on these numbers and give you an idea of, of what's going on. What you can do to help the airport is fly out of Peoria. Again, it's very data-driven. Airlines know a lot about you. If you book a flight, and you drive to Chicago and fly out of there, they know your ZIP code from your credit card, they knew you flew out of Chicago, and they say, this is somebody who flies out of, who will drive to Chicago, we don't need to add a flight. If you fly through Chicago, or through Dallas, or through Charlotte, what they see is, oh, here's somebody who goes from Peoria, and they go down to, let's, you know, let's say, Miami, right? Once that number gets to a certain point, and they go, huh, we can, we can fill a twice-a-week flight from Peoria to Miami. And that's how we get flights, that's how we get Sarasota, that's how we get Denver, that's how we get Fort Lauderdale. So I know the concern a lot of times as well. I missed a flight one time in Chicago. That happens, it happens to me, too. It's not as often as you would think. Sometimes if you get bit by that, you never forget it, but that would be what I would convey, is if you want new routes, if you want non-stop routes, fly through Peoria as often as you can. Don't drive to Bloomington, don't drive to Moline, don't drive to Chicago, because on a flight like that, two seats matter. In a low-margin industry, they matter. So that's what I would convey to you. I mean, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or later, and I hope to, again, come back at least once a year and kind of give you an update on where we're at. And hopefully, by the time I come back next year, I can tell you we're above where we were in 2019, so.
One quick question, if that's okay? I understand we were under, or negotiating a contract with Byerly for service on the airplanes. Is that finished? Have they negotiated that contract?
For service on?
I thought all the commercial airlines that come in are serviced, if they need service, through Byerly Aviation, or is that incorrect?
I don't think that's been, the issue we actually had is, again, with labor shortage, we actually ended up in a situation where Byerly, who's normally 24/7, had to go down to not being 24/7, not having that third shift there. So I don't think that's happened at this point. There's, I'll say there's some improvements going on locally in terms of maintenance that will be done at the airport. It would not shock me if that happens in the near future, it's just that those aren't public right now, so, if that answers some of your questions. I mean, there's obviously some entities that have hangars in Peoria that no longer have hangars. Maui Jim just sold their hangar. We're all expecting, Caterpillar's in a long lease, but we're all expecting they will, at some point in time, may not need that hangar. But we've had inquiries that would bring a lot of flights into Peoria for, for that, so. But Byerly's been in the same situation we're in, which is labor. They don't have labor. So I, it would surprise me if they were taking on any, and I haven't heard that conversation in any of our meetings yet, so.
I'm probably incorrect, thank you.
Well, there were, there were conversations about, about, there are fixed base operators, so they, they do all the fueling and whatnot, so there's been some conversations about them taking over fueling for certain airlines, and when, when that happens. But again, there's been a lot of things that were in conversations that kind of stopped recently, and again, it's just labor, is if you don't have the people to do it, you can't grow and take on, take on new things. There's a lot of things at the airport we would love to take on right now. It's just tough to do. We're down three maintenance people, so, you know, we have to look at other things like possibly even contracting out the land-side maintenance, just so we can do the air-side maintenance ourselves, so.
Well, Mr. Shields, on, on that, I want to also commend you, though. I, I know on some of the things that you contract for, you, from what I understand, you looked at the numbers and made sure that all the numbers were correct, that were coming in, and so I want to commend you for keeping a good track on the budget over there at the airport, and making sure that not only Peoria Heights taxpayers' dollars are accounted for, but the entire service area of the airport. So kudos to you on that.
Thanks. You know, when you guys appointed me, I told you I'd read everything, and then I asked for extra information. I guess I was the only one that read that one. But yeah, that was about a half a million dollars, so mathematical algebra error on that one, that the consultants on the study didn't catch, and the county board didn't catch, and no one else caught, so, yeah. No, I told you, when you guys put me on this board, I told you I'd read everything. I take it serious, I read the packets before I come, and, and that's what I'm going to do. And the other thing I would tell this board is, is it's a steep learning curve, even for me. I have an engineering background, a law background, I've done construction, and between all of those things and FAA regulations, it's a very steep learning curve. I don't think anyone can get up to speed, maybe if they're lucky, in one term. You know, when you point somebody to this board, you should probably be looking at two or three terms. With that said, that's not for my benefit. When that's, with that said, I also think, you know, there comes a point, and there should come a point, where the person steps down, so somebody new can step up, and that person can still be around to help them with that learning curve. We had some people on this board that were around a long time, now we've got a lot of new people, and there's institutional knowledge there that you just need, you know? There's only now a couple people that sat on the board when the new terminal was, was built, and know some of those things. So it's, it's a steep learning curve, but the only way you can kind of counteract that is to dive in, and so.
Have you been able to bounce any ideas off of anyone that maybe previously served on that board? Have you been in contact with anyone?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, absolutely. Gary, as you guys know, Gary probably, Gary sat on the board for a long time, 20-plus years, I think. First thing I did was, you know, Gary and I sat down and had breakfast, and, and gave me the lay of the land, and, and, you know, that's my intention as well, to keep in contact with Gary, because there's things that come up, like with the tower, that sometimes you have to call them and just say, I mean, maybe you guys do the same thing with old trustees, you got to call them up and say, what happened 20 years ago? What happened 15 years ago? And how did you deal with it? Because institutions like this are bigger than all of us, and so, you know, an airport like this, that's been around for 70 years, you, you got to do that. And Gary's been great about helping me, kind of, and that's what I'd like to do at some point, is, I don't plan on sitting on this board until I'm 80, even if you guys, even if whoever sits here, that's not the plan. The plan is at some point to, you know, know what needs to be done, and then somebody else sits here, and then now there's two people in Peoria Heights that know how to do it, that, you know? So that's the plan.
Just a quick question about property tax bills, should be fresh in everyone's mind,
Is that your primary source of revenue, property taxes?
It's, the levy's up there. We also have PFCs, which are passenger charges. Those are more restricted. We've got, obviously, investment income. And all this is public information. You can look any of this up on, it should be available on our website. If not, I can get it for you. But we also have rental car fees, things like that. Our operating budget, I think our operating budget's about 5.9 million. And so, it's, that's certainly a big chunk of it. Again, things have been skewed lately, because we've gotten so much grant money, that things that we would have been using, you know, fees for, we've been using CARES Act money and things like that. But no, the property levy, I mean, it is a big chunk, yeah. And I'd love to decrease that, you know, if we can get to that point, but.
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time. There you go.
Anyone else? Thanks for being here, and your service on this board, but I'll also take this opportunity to thank you for being such a good business owner and engaged in the community and all you do at Heritage Square, so thanks.
Hopefully, there'll be, in the near future, some announcements on that, some tenants we have are expanding. You'll hear about that soon. I always leave it up to the tenants on when they want to announce that. And so, hopefully, those will all be things that are positive for the village, so. Pretty soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we would be at item seven, old business. Any old business to come before the board?
I have a quick update on the fountain.
Oh, thank you.
To let you guys know what's going on with that. They busted out all the inside rebuilds, all the, inside that shoot up, that's all rebuilt. They found probably like four leaks that were in the tower part of that, and that's what was the major problem. That is all replaced. Next step, they cut it. They're gonna be jackhammering that tomorrow. Gonna pour cement back in, epoxy it, and then we should be good to go. We're getting a quote from Laser for lighting replacement. We're also getting a quote from them for doing the light replacement, too, to get a couple of different options. And we'll see where we're sitting with that. But hopefully, that should be back up and running soon.
Thank you. I do get a lot of questions about the fountain.
I know, I do, too.
So while you have the floor, I had one inquiry about brown water. Have we been having some issues with that?
Yeah, so recently, we've had a little uptick of some brown water. We've had a couple situations that have caused that. The most recent being some hydrant flow and pressure testing that was taking place over in the Toledo area for future construction possibilities. They have to know what they have to do for fire protection, so they have to flow those hydrants and see what they can do, what they have to design the building, how they figure that all out. And that has been the main cause here recently. If people can let their lines flush out, they usually clear up. I understand it's not pleasant, but that's the best way to do it, is just to let it run for five, 10, 15 minutes. It should clear up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other old business? Let's get right into new business, then. The first is reimbursement to Pearl Companies for CNG concrete in the amount of $4,000. Trustee Goff, ask for motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve that reimbursement. My understanding is that when the initial alley repair that we approved previously went on, Gary Pearl came out, talked to the contractors, and asked for some additional repairs to be made. They told him that on the Village IM, they could only do what the village had approved. So he said that he would pay the extra and then talk to us about reimbursement. I did not get an opportunity to go over and look at it. I've spoken with Administrator Sutton, and we feel that the villages, it's within our business to go ahead and approve this extra $4,000 for the other repairs that were made in that alley.
Thank you, Trustee Goff. Before we take any questions, may I get a second?
A second.
All right. Now, questions or discussion?
Just, I'll say something. I think that we just have to be a little bit careful. I certainly understand what this is happening, and frankly, the outcome would be the same if they would've just gone under like a BDD, or, you know, looked for something like that. I think the problem is, you know, and I have all the most respect for Pearl and Oliver's over there, I think the problem is, is that when we do something, and then, I don't know, build a front yard fence, and then ask for permission after, or do a additional work on an alley, and then ask for permission after, it just sets a bad precedent. So I think that the outcome would be the same, regardless of what we decide on this tonight. I am gonna vote in favor of it, but I think we have to just be careful not to set this precedent that, you know, any business can go out and do something, and then send us a bill for it after that, you know, after the fact. I think we had a great example on Prospect, where the ice cream store and another business, I think W. Sullivan's, is that right? Got together, they came to the board, they asked for permission to redo the little alley there, and we paid for it. That's the typical route that one would expect to go. That didn't happen here, so I would just, you know, again, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I just think that we just can't do something and then ask for forgiveness afterward, or send a bill afterward. So that's why I'm hesitant, but I will be voting in favor of this.
Do you have something, Dustin? Go ahead.
I just want to add, it's a little bit different, Trustee Wigginton. This is our property that we are supposed to maintain. And I do also want to point out that Mr. Pearl did know, going in, that nothing was promised to him. And I think that because that alley is in bad shape, Public Works did a great job of getting it to where I think is, it's a win-win for both sides, because it was very bad. But I think he knew going in, there wasn't nothing, he wasn't expecting anything, so if the board decided, the reason why I brought it back to the board, because, one, that's policy, but there was no expectation from him, and that he just said, "Do it, I'll ask for the money later." So I want to make that clear.
No, and I'm certainly not accusing that. And, you know, having been, you know, I lived on a public street for a long time, and I maintained the public street, and I had it seal-coated, and I kept that public street up. And I never sent the bill to Peoria Heights as I maintained the public street. So I get it. I just, I just don't want us to say to anyone that they can go pave their public road and then expect that we pay for.
Historically, they paved that whole alley themselves and never built the village. So I go back to that. We did not pay for that, they did. This is, and so, to me, this is a good gesture on the board's behalf to fix an alley of a business that, of course, we're very appreciative of. But again, going back to, they did pave that entire alley, did not charge the village. So I think it's just in good faith, it's something the village should do. That's why I brought it back to the board, so.
And I appreciate that, Chief, and I will be voting in favor of it. I just, we, I think we just have to set this in stone, that this cannot, can't be repeated. This can't be something we do often.
All right, anyone else? If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Ordinance 2022-1683, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 2 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights to regulate portable storage units. Trustee Wigginton, I'd ask for motion to approve.
I move to approve Ordinance 22, sorry, 2022-1683.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right, thank you. Back to you, Trustee Wigginton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, we have previously discussed this issue. I think what Chief Sutton and Council Walton got together on was basically where we were at this last meeting, was that I think there was a consensus around this pods issue, where people are just leaving their pods out for months on end, maybe good portions of years, and just leaving them there. This just changes that to address a timeline, not to exceed a period of 30 days in a one-year period. Chief, did I miss anything on that?
No, my only question would be, you know, it takes everybody different timelines when they're moving, and which was the reason for these pods to begin with. Trying to be safe, we might want to look at the 60-day instead of the 30-day, but I would not be for anything of a max over 60 days. But, you know, when closing on a house, it might go over 30, and I'd hate to get into that situation where we're out there placing that over a few weeks. I think to be safe, I definitely would support a 60-day, if the board would.
Another alternative that we saw in some of the other, I'm not sure if this is on, in some of the other communities, was, you know, vesting the village administrator, city administrator with authority to extend it for good cause, so that, you know, if somebody comes in and says, "Hey, man, you know, closing in, you know, two more weeks, you know, it's gonna be," you could say yes, you know, but they would know going in that they've got a limit. That's another alternative. I'm not saying that's the right way.
What's your preferred alternative?
Really, it's a policy decision, so I think 30 days is long enough for most people, if they're moving, to accomplish that move in good faith. But I'm not gonna quibble with 60 days. I just wanted to present it as an alternative.
I don't mind putting an extra step on the administrator, so.
I know, sorry.
No, it's okay. All jokes aside, I'm good with 30 and giving, and we do that in like other situations where there'd be dumpsters, like if they're doing construction, we do do the same thing in that. So I guess to follow suit, I'd be in favor by doing that, capping it at 30, and then giving them extensions if they need it. But I'm, I'll just tell the board here, I won't be giving many extensions past 60 days at all. That's more than enough time, so.
Well, I'm certainly able to amend my motion to 60, to make it cleaner, or if whatever is necessary, I.
Well, you've made the motion. We'll let someone else make the amendment if they choose.
I'll move to amend.
All right.
I move to amend Ordinance 2022-1683, paragraph, which one is it? B. 3, to, and change it from 30 days to 60 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, on the amendment, any discussion on the amendment?
So this would be that they wouldn't have to receive special permission to have it for 60 days?
Correct. They just couldn't leave it there all year long and use it as a garage, or?
What we were just talking about is letting them have it 30 days, and then giving administration the opportunity to extend it past the 30 days.
Right.
So your amendment is not that, no?
No. My amendment is just allowing a max of 60 days.
60 days, okay.
Well, I don't like the asking for extension things, because what if one person doesn't get the extension? They're gonna say the village is against them.
It's different than asking for a permit, right? Like, if you want to keep, like, when I had my camper, and I needed to keep it, I don't even remember what it is, I think you can have it on the street for 40, I don't remember how many hours. I needed an extension due to an extenuating circumstance. I called, I gave my reason why, it fell into the category of "why," and I got a 24-hour extension, right? Like, I don't see how it's really any different than what we're already doing in other areas. Also, now you have someone who, on the flip side of it, like, yes, maybe some people, it does take 60 days for them to move, but if it doesn't, and we just have someone who's being lazy, or doing something not appropriate, which is why this was brought up in the first place, now we're giving them 60 days instead of controlling it at 30 days.
Yeah, but if they came, if they came to Chief Sutton and said, "Hey, I need 30 more days," even if they are these lazy people, how are we gonna say no if they say, "I'm still moving"? I mean, we're still gonna approve the 30 days anyway, so why put an extra step in there?
Well, we're not gonna get into having people bring in closing documents and all of that.
That's what I'm saying. We're gonna go to 60 anyway.
Yeah, and I can't really see a reason that we wouldn't extend it. We would give almost everybody that, you know, courtesy of the 60 if they asked for it, whether it be a closing or something else, so.
That was my thought. I mean, why put in a step that's?
I think, I think that, you know, for clarity and for ease of, for our officers in writing tickets, this is a clear line in the sand. Makes it easier for code enforcement to start the clock and to end it, rather than having to call up to the village hall and say, "Did this guy get an extension or not?" If it's there for 60 days, it's there for 60 days, and if it's there for 61, it gets a ticket.
Anyone else on the amendment? Madam Clerk, please read the amendment.
All right, I have an amendment by Trustee Weisenberg, and seconded by Trustee Gett, to change paragraph B. 3 from 30 days to 60 days. Is that correct, Trustee Weisenberg?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, call the question, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right. I've asked this before we voted, but, so if they already have the storage pods, they're not grandfathered in or anything?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee, Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we would be at a discussion of the Peoria Heights Fire Department. Trustee Wigginton?
Okay, so just one last little thing to talk about is the fire department. So the, the numbers, I think, all went out to the trustees regarding what Peoria's numbers look like. I appreciate Chief Sutton reaching out to the city administrator at Peoria to get some hard numbers. It's my understanding that these numbers resemble, or maybe are mirror images of what this board had previously seen a couple of years back. So I, the reason why I thought those numbers were important, having spoken to some of my fellow trustees, is to give us some perspective of what we're looking at in terms of costs, what we're looking at in terms of our choices, and what kind of numbers stack up in Peoria, that option versus the options that we are presented with here today. So I wanted to begin this discussion like I began it a couple, maybe a month or so, maybe two months ago, that I think all ideas presented, I know why we're all here, is to do what's best for the village. So, you know, I think any ideas put out, I want you to feel free to speak your minds, speak clearly, and speak, you know, because we all know, who sit up here, that you're speaking out of your care for the village, so. But I think what I saw in these numbers is that we have, we have a fairly significant cost in some of the options that are presented by the city of Peoria. They are clearly some large numbers, but I guess, you know, based on this Minnesota model, they could be quite significantly higher than what we are being presented from the city of Peoria. So it's my understanding, I think what we were looking at previously for the option of maintaining the volunteer is, you know, at the high side, 160, maybe creeping up to 180 cost-wise, for maintaining what we've come to find is the status quo of what we have here, you know, a person on day, and then our volunteers at night. What the city of Peoria seems to be presenting is a couple of options. One, they take over probably this firehouse, and that was the expensive option. They take this on and take some of our engines on and do that. Then, the other option was just basically simply coverage based on numbers. And those both, you know, have graduated, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they have graduated numbers, and I can pull those up. But, so we do have some options with what the city is presenting, but again, those numbers are relatively high. So from my takeaway on our last discussion, the only difference is between our coverage with what we have right now with status quo, is that if we got a call during the day, and we had a day person, that person would go out to the fire, assess the situation, and then pull the Mavis box. That is, that is what we have currently, and that's what we would have under the option of maintaining our fire department. The options that are presented by the city of Peoria is a little bit different. They would be covering the days, they would go to the fire and start fighting that fire at that time. But as you can see, the cost associated, that there's a significant jump in cost. So that is really what the option, I think, comes down to. So that is really what the option I think comes down to. That is what the question is. Someone coming out, assessing the situation, pulling the Mavis box at what cost it's been quoted, or a contracting with another fire department and they go with their crew and start fighting the fire right there. That's, but at a 8X cost, okay? So that is what, or maybe 5X, but that's what we're looking at. So, that is, I think, when we boil it down, that's what our question is today. But Chief, if you wanted to fill in a little bit?
Well, a couple things. I just wanna clarify, the numbers that they gave us, a couple things. Obviously, you are correct with the status quo. If we were to fill that position with a full-time position, we would be in the same position we would with prior to this recent retirement, so that's how we would operate. Now, the numbers that Peoria sent us, I think that they quoted us a couple things. One, EMS calls versus fire calls. Obviously, we don't need the majority of EMS calls handled now. They broke it down with fire calls, so that number is 367-500. It isn't the 742, that would be all in for both. So I just wanna clarify that. So the numbers are a little bit different, they're the exact same as they were in 2019. But the question this board has to look at is that it's one of two things. Either you're going that route for the coverage, or we're going to proceed with what we've been using the last couple of years, if you're happy with that formula. It is gonna cost us more because obviously, we're going, that was more of a, that position was filled with a stipend, this position will be a full-time employee that we've discussed, if you remember right, and, you know, that ranges from the low side of 116-8 to 156-5. So those are the numbers, those are the options. But I, this, the number that they did submit with both EMS and fire, that isn't even an option, because we don't need the EMS side of it. It is, it would be the fire, and I'm just trying to compare apples to apples. So I think that's kinda what's in front of the board now, and I'm not gonna speak for Chief Thompson, and like I said last, last meeting, who's done an outstanding job since he's been hired in with his team. But I think we are under a timeline here because he spent two weeks of vacation covering the village, and then he's, then he's set it up with his team to cover, and that deadline is coming August 14th. So I think that, you know, we're a little bit under the gun on how we proceed, because this is a, definitely, obviously, a public safety issue, and we don't want, we want this to be seamless. So I think that's what the board needs to discuss as far as moving forward out of those options, so.
Chief, since this topic came to light recently by the retirement of Mike Wu, has anyone on the fire department expressed any interest in a stipend position in the daytime?
No, not at all.
And have we got any more volunteers for the daytime since this topic came up?
Not for the daytime. I have put on two or three other guys that are gonna be here now on night shifts.
No one in the daytime?
No one in the daytime.
Okay.
I have some questions, if that's okay?
Yep, somebody else starts, please.
They are for Chief Thompson, so, can you, if you don't have these numbers, I'm sorry, I was gonna email this to you and I didn't, but how, do you know how many volunteers you had when you started this position? Actual volunteers that responded to calls?
Uh, no, I don't know. I would say somewhere around 20.
Okay, and do you, how many volunteers do you have currently?
Still the current, 1920.
You're at 20, okay. Prior to you taking over, we did have volunteers that were not responding, and what is the protocol now in order for our volunteers to respond?
You have to make 10% of the calls for a quarter, for three months.
Okay, and who manages that?
The personnel committee.
Okay.
And it's the captains, basically, on the personnel committee.
Okay, perfect. Do you know, so, I believe you said in our last meeting that we had two actual structural fires in 2021, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, do you know the average of structural fires we've had for the last several years? Like, would you say we averaged two a year?
Two to three.
Okay, two to three a year. In, previously, prior to, like, you taking on, obviously, you probably couldn't answer all these questions, but did, was the Mavis box pulled on every single structural fire that we-
Not at all, no, no, that's, no.
Okay.
No, in fact, we, we just had one, a house fire three weeks ago, I think it was, on, at night, and we took care of it ourselves.
No Mavis box?
Correct.
Perfect. Since you've been in this role, can, do you know off the top of your head how much money you've recruited grant money, based on things that you've gone out yourself and done that has not come out of your budget?
Not for sure. The only thing I know for sure is the $26,000 for the SCBA cylinders. I know there's others, but I can't remember what those are.
Okay, and do you have any grants outstanding right now that you're waiting on?
There are three others that are out there right now, yes, currently. One with Gary Sinise Foundation, and the other one with Subway, Firehouse Subs, and FM Global.
Okay, and what, do you get to choose what those are for?
Yes, we're asking for radios and SCBA replacement.
Perfect. So when we receive grants like that, do those go into the firehouse, like, general fund, or does, do these funds go into things, like, for the association?
As far as reimbursement, it depends.
No, 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 so like, if they receive a grant, does it go into the, their general fund, or does it go into the fire association?
That comes into village hall.
Okay.
Same with the police department.
Yeah, okay.
But goes out for fire expense, all right.
Yeah, it's to offset fire expense.
No, no, I get that, I just wanna make sure that it was coming in to pay for things like that and not going in, like, so like, when they spend $26,000 on equipment, it has to be approved, right? Or it has to be in their budget or approved by us. Well, if they get a $26,000 grant, like, we're still approving that, right? It's not just going into, like, an association where they can use for something else.
Correct, and it'll be the same example that the grant money that Senator Kayler just secured for us, when we order the updated body cams and automatic plate readers, we will order and pay for that upfront and then be reimbursed, but it'll come through the village.
Great, I think that's true. I don't feel like there's any shortage of how I feel about this, but I do wanna say that I think that you have done every single thing that we've asked you to do. You've been put in a position that was not an easy task. This board has been in this situation, obviously, before, and these are difficult conversations that we have to have, but I feel that I ran as a trustee to make the best decision I felt like for the village, and ultimately, as the trustee, I feel like my job is to make sure that we provide service to our community, and so I am in favor of us hiring someone to run this. I think that it's been doing well, and I think you continue to add money by applying for grants and things like that, so I think that we can afford it.
I appreciate it.
And I'll go next if I can. Just for those listening at home, the use of the Mavis box is a standard practice for most, if not all, departments outside of Peoria.
Yeah.
88% of all fire departments in the United States are structured like we are. Peoria is the outlier. Mayor, we need to proceed with hiring, we need to proceed with the hiring process to hire daytime duty shift personnel to cover daytime shifts. This idea of Peoria is not anything I could ever support. To my fellow board members-
Do you support calling them if we have a fire?
I'm not finished. To my fellow board members and those listening at home, the citizens of Peoria Heights elect this governing body to provide public safety. The idea of outsourcing our public safety to an unaccountable, unelected government is beyond repugnant. The citizens of Peoria Heights have no representation within the government of Peoria. If the citizens of Peoria have an issue with our public safety, they can lobby this body or they can replace us. If we were to outsource the fire department to the, if we were to outsource the fire department, the citizens of this great town would be reduced to a number on a balance sheet, and we could never pay a Peoria enough to matter. If we outsource the fire department, the cold reality is that once our fire department is outsourced, it is gone. The citizens in this town are entitled to representation within their public safety. We must act now and start the hiring process and provide the services the citizens elect this governing body to provide. The cost of going to Peoria is the loss of an American right of citizens in this community to have representation within their local government and services. The only rights we have are at the ballot box. We do not vote for the city of Peoria's government, we do not vote for the fire chief, and we do not vote for the mayor who elects the fire chief in the city of Peoria. The citizens of Peoria Heights elect this governing body to provide services, and we must provide these services. We are not citizens of Peoria.
All right, we just said a lot, so you're suggesting hire one firefighter?
I think we need to start with a duty crew and provide the daytime services that we currently lack, and then we use the Mavis box like every other department around here does. Peoria is the outlier, we are not. 88% of all fire departments are structured like we are. It's not a deficiency, it's the American spirit, if you will.
I'm trying to ask you what you're suggesting. Are you suggesting hire one firefighter? Then you mentioned a duty crew, what is it you're asking?
So, the one firefighter during the day would be the duty crew. It would be one guy at this point, and then we evaluate it from there. If that's, if we think we need to-
All right, I'm not trying to pick that apart, I'm just trying to figure out where you are. So Chief, one firefighter, I'm gonna ask you, how many firefighters does it take to go into a working fire?
By law, there's nobody trapped for it. If there's somebody trapped, one can go in.
One can go in.
If somebody's trapped in the fire, if there's somebody in there.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. I thought originally you gave us a different answer.
It was four if nobody is in the structure. If somebody tells us outside, everybody's out, then it's four people. If there's somebody actually in the structure, they, or they don't report it to you, there's nobody in there, or nobody there when you get there, then you have to assume somebody's in the structure. One guy can go.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I didn't know that. All right, anything else, Trustee Weisenberg?
No, I just wanna stress, for those listening at home, in case there's any confusion, the Mavis box and calling for mutual aid is a common practice of almost all fire departments. It's not a deficiency within the village of Peoria Heights, it's business as usual.
Why wouldn't Peoria have to use the Mavis box? What's the reasoning behind that? They don't, I'm asking, I'd like to ask the chief that question.
The resources are there, they have enough resources.
They don't need, they don't need to call the Mavis box?
They do, they have calls.
Okay.
To stand by our station. So when they have had multiple calls going on at the same time, they have called, in fact, it's just happened within the last six months, where they have called and asked us to stand by us, Dunlap and West Peoria.
So if they have a big-
Multiple incidents going on at the same time, and we get a call to stand by our station.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing, Trustee Kazam, Peoria doesn't use the Mavis box as much because they hire firemen, they hire people to be there, so they don't need to.
I just wanna say that I, I'm an old record, but I got, I would say, 99% of the people I talk to talk to me about this, they wanna keep it Peoria Heights Fire Department, they don't want me, they're afraid of, we're just gonna lose our fire department, then we got, then what else are we gonna lose? You know, Peoria's gonna be here, and then, people do not want to lose our fire department. They wanna keep our fire department, and they're more than happy to start off with one guy during the day, and I've had people come up and tell me that with all going on, baby steps, we're gonna have to start figuring a way to get people to be working more during the day. I mean, it's expensive, but with everything growing in Peoria Heights like it is, we're gonna have to start planning for the future so that future boards can take care of it. I mean, we're not gonna be here forever, and somebody needs, we need to start the process of building a professional fire department if it's just for first shift, but we need to get the one guy hired. I thought we had agreed to hire that guy in the last meeting.
Just discussing.
Well, I, I wanna think Trustee Gatt here is, you know, hitting on an important point. So, I think right now, there's no question that maintaining the status quo is the most cost-effective option. The thing that you mentioned though, Trustee Gatt, is going beyond the status quo. And I think if we go beyond the status quo, meaning we start hiring on, if we change the definition of duty crew to not be one person, but being multiple people, like four, three or four, then it starts not becoming the cost-effective option. But, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's not value in maintaining our identity and maintaining the Peoria Heights Fire Department. I just think that, right now, numbers, and that's what, that's what I asked Chief Sutton to get, was numbers. On the numbers aspect alone, the maintaining the status quo as a one-man duty crew is the most effective option. If we were to expand it that point, you know, that's not our question today.
I understand that, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying was, keep the status quo, but future boards are gonna have to start thinking down the road, probably won't, most likely won't be while I'm still on the board, but we need to start planning for the future, and we start getting, we start the ball rolling, and other boards can pick it up and keep it going. I'm not, I'm not saying do it within the next three, four years, I understand it's expensive, but we need to start thinking about that. Other boards are gonna have to, we lay the groundwork for future boards to hopefully build, improve, whatever it is we need to do. If it doesn't, if we don't get, if we keep it with one, that's fine, that, but we gotta lay the groundwork so they can build on it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we go out next year and bring six guys on it.
Right, and I, and I, I don't, I don't mean to, and I apologize, I was not meaning to imply that. I just think that, right now, the status quo is the most cost-effective option.
I agree.
And my only question would be to Chief, when your discussions with this, with the rest of our, of our fire department, is, one of the things that, when this previously came up with the board, there was some, there was some worry whether the mentality of the fire department, you know, the people that are volunteers versus the, you know, the one who is a employee or two, would that alter the dynamics of the, of the department? What do you say to that, Chief?
No, again, I think I said it the last time, that this individual's kind of the informal leader of the fire department, so it's not gonna create any animosity in the organization by any means. Can I say one other thing? This is really important, the individual that we have covering for us right now, he is done the 14th of August, he is taking a position with the Memphis Fire Department, so, and I have nobody after that date. There is nobody currently, right now, to fulfill that need after the 14th of August.
I just wanna make a couple comments, Mayor. First of all, in all fairness to Peoria, they did not come to us, we came to them. This board asked me to get these numbers, and all they did was provide them for us to help in our decision-making. And I also wanna point out that our working relationship with Peoria is outstanding, not only at the fire department level, but the police department level. The police department, especially once they absorbed our dispatch center, which was a state mandate, works hand-in-hand with Peoria on a daily basis, and I can't tell you, that is the best thing operationally that I have ever seen, even though we still work on the customer service side, because what's important to them is not so much, or what's important to us is not so much important to them when it comes to small things, but we're working through that stuff. But our working relationship with Peoria is unbelievable, and I think that the fire department as well, whenever we need them, they're great. I was on scene at the last fire, that the issue we had, and they were nothing but professional and outstanding, they didn't look down on us, they didn't talk down, they were a part of the team. So I think that, you know, we talk a lot about Peoria, but they've been a great neighbor, and because of our sheer geography, we have to work with them. But on the police department's side, I'm telling you, if you see what we see daily and how we interact with them, it's unbelievable. It's like our 16-man force turned into 190 because they send the cavalry whenever we need them. So I just think we should also give thanks where thanks is due when it comes to, you know, you know, supporting us, and they do, but I wanna go back to, they didn't knock on our door to solicit this, we asked them to give us these numbers. So I just wanna say that piece. And then I, and I do agree with Chief Thompson that, you know, we are kind of under the gun or have some kind of stopgap option, whatever that might be, if it is a status quo, and if that's the case, we need to really get going on the posting, the interview process, and get moving on it, because I do, I want this to be seamless, we don't have room for any gaps. It's public safety, so.
The other thing, we did use Peoria just two weeks ago, we had a car accident on War Drive, and the individual who was covering for us immediately called, because he knew he was gonna be the only person, and he called for Engine 10, which is on Wisconsin there, and they were there immediately. So we, we used them seamlessly, just like Chief said.
Two comments if I could, Chiefs, this certainly isn't anything against Peoria. As I said, the citizens of Peoria, the citizens of Peoria Heights do not have any representation within the government of Peoria. This, of course, in my opinion, is a deal breaker. Trustee Wigginson, just to follow up on something you said, this isn't about identity. Again, it's about having representation within a, within an essential local service provided by government. We do not elect the officials in Peoria that, under the Peoria option, would be making very important decisions for the citizens of Peoria Heights with absolutely no power of the citizens of Peoria Heights to regulate that governing body. That's a deal breaker. That's a deal breaker. I mean, that's un-American, to say it bluntly. So, the only option here, in my mind, is that we provide the services the citizens of Peoria Heights have elected us to provide. So, I'm in complete support of starting the hiring process.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion, and while you're talking about electability, I think the primary responsibility of this board is public service and public safety, and making sure that people are safe in their homes if there is an emergency. So, I think it's only fair to let the public know that your solution, in most cases, is not gonna permit that one firefighter to go within a building other than under unique circumstances, and that they're going to be calling a sister city that you have really criticized earlier tonight. So, I think the public needs to know that. We need transparency, and we need to make sure that we provide the best public safety that we can. So, those of you who are promoting this solution of one firefighter, in the past, we had a volunteer that received a stipend who rarely took any time off. So, what's gonna happen on the days that this firefighter is not working?
I'll come for him.
What's gonna happen when that person is on vacation?
Well, then let's hire-
You're gonna-
That's what I did for Chief Wu. I covered for him when he was gone.
Okay. Just so those listening at home, there's a lot of distortion here. The way we're operating is the same way that most departments around us operate. Peoria is the outlier. I understand that Peoria has a full, professional fire department that can be there like this. They are not the normal. They are not like ninety percent of America. So, Mayor, I'm sorry, but when you're trying to frame this as I'm trying to sabotage the public safety of the citizens of Peoria Heights, no, I'm not.
I'm not framing it that way at all. You were talking about electability.
I understand that. So, eighty-eight percent of all fire departments are structured like this. So, I'm not doing anything that's outside precedent. I'm trying to provide the services that ninety percent of Americans expect their elected leaders to provide.
I, I'm sorry, Trusty Weisenberg, and I, I wanted to jump in here, because I know that what we, you know, what we started by saying is, is that I think both, you know, perspectives are, you know, have different mindsets on how to deliver the best for our village. And what I, I think the distinction is, and this is kinda how I started this, is that, yeah, the, I haven't heard that number, Trusty Weisenberg, but the status quo, and this is how we have been for, forever, is that we have a volunteer fire department, and if they need help, they pull the Mavis box. The distinction is, is that if we didn't have to pull the Mavis box, I'm sure that would be great, too. If, if we had a, if we had a full fire department that could go out and start fighting that fire, get into that fire immediately, that would be great, too. Now, that's an investment. That's an investment that we can make into the Peoria Heights Fire Department. That would be a sizable investment. What the chief and what Administrator York offered us from, from Peoria is a solution that we, that we would get that from the city of Peoria. So, that is the distinction. It's just, in my mind, there, those are the two different options, and I, I can't, you know, I think you gotta go with what your gut is. Is it, you know, there's, there's a cost associated with that, and then there is, you know, there's a cost associated with having a Peoria Heights Fire Department, or not having one. And I think there, and the way to measure those costs is, you know, sometimes it doesn't always come down to numbers. So, I, I think that, that's what I think our choice is today. I, I think that is what we, and we need to, and when I say today, I mean today.
Well, and I'm not pushing for one over the other. What I'm suggesting with one firefighter, I don't think that's enough. I think you need more, if you're gonna, you're gonna have a crew in the daytime.
I'd like to make sure that I understand something. If I'm looking at this sheet correctly, and following what Administrator Sutton said, if we just did fire calls for Peoria, it'd be three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Yeah. Is that a yearly, yearly, annual? Okay. The, what, the annual, the annual budget for the Heights Fire Department is three sixty-six, and that doesn't include, if I'm correct, that doesn't include adding the new guy. Is that right?
You're right.
So, it's gonna, so I heard a couple times that, that the duty crew was the most cost-effective. I'm, maybe I don't understand that, because it does, it seems like it's, it's a little bit more. I understand what's being said about representation. I understand what's being said about the value of having our own fire department. We've always had our own fire department. Public safety has been brought up. Public safety is very important. I understand how, that what Trusty Weisenberg is saying about how most of the other outlying cities in America function, but I'm a bit of a worrier, and my concern is that the delay between someone going to look and then pull a Mavis box, as opposed to someone showing up and fighting the fire. Obviously, I think we can all agree that the ideal here would be to have the Peoria Heights Fire Department be able, be equipped and ready to show up and fight a fire. But we have to be, as Trusty Dvor was saying, we're, we've been elected, we're on this board to represent the Village of Peoria Heights, represent the interests, not just today, but into the future. And I think that it's, this is a sticky, sticky situation for us to look at. I think that it's gonna require some thought. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time.
Trusty Goff, I, I would like, Chief, if you would say, how many EMS or non-fire calls does the fire department respond to?
I, without looking at the number, I can't tell you.
But it's more than a majority?
Probably close to eighty-five to ninety percent are EMS calls for the department.
So, we currently, the fire department, and just, just so that we are doing apples-to-apples, currently, we're responding to ninety-five percent of the calls are EMS calls. Under what they're offering is, with the assumption that it's gonna be three sixty-five, that would mean that, or three sixty-seven.
Yes, sir.
They would not be responding to any EMS calls, which we have AMT, I understand, but we have AMT right now.
If I, if I remember right, when this question was brought up last time, that, that umbrella would include cardiac arrest and some high-end EMS calls, that was under the fire department, so that was included. But as far as separating them out this time, I didn't have them do that, because they already did it last time.
Yeah.
But to say that they wouldn't go to EMS, that isn't true. They would be going to some EMS. That would be part of the, under the, just like accidents.
Right.
Same thing there.
You're gonna go for public safety.
The only other thing I would say to that is, those numbers that they were using is probably the 2019 numbers.
Right.
Which was nine hundred and sixty calls, and last year, we were at twelve hundred and five. So, we had a significant increase in calls.
One thing I just wanna add to, like, kinda how this conversation is going, I think that, yeah, everybody wants us to have our own department, right? Like, that is the idea. But this village is growing. We are, you know, our, we're, we've had a balanced budget, thanks to the hard work that this, you know, this administration has done. But having public, I mean, providing public service does come at a cost, right? Like, it's not cheap. Our public safety comes at a cost. So, I think even what, like, what Trusty Gett was saying, like, eventually, we may have enough call volume and fire calls that we need to bring on more. Maybe we do end up with a full fire department long-term, right? Maybe that's not how it is. Maybe we run into a duty crew with one or two people, three people, and that's, like, that has it. But these costs to provide fire coverage are going to increase, whether we keep them or we go with the city of Peoria. Okay? If we take on another department, like, yes, today, on this paper, it says that the balance is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. It's not always gonna be three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And obviously, if we did contract with them, we would have a contract to lock us in, but those rates are going to drastically increase every year, and as their increases go up, or they can't pay their bills, the first thing they're gonna do is ask us for more money, and then we are locked in a situation where we can't go back on it, right? Like, we can't just say, oh, well, we don't really wanna pay you two hundred extra thousand dollars, we'll just take back our own fire coverage, because now we've dissolved our fire department. Because right now, and today, it seems like a cheaper option. Right? Like, so I just like to keep that in mind. Like, it may be cheaper today, but is it gonna be cheaper in ten years?
Thank you for your thoughtful remarks on this, and cheaper is not always best, and when it comes to public safety, we should not be looking at the cheapest. That's my opinion. My concern is that one firefighter has nothing to do with the cost, although it is about fifteen times what we were paying for the same thing, but when Chief Walters was here, retired Chief Walters, we talked about a duty crew. He and I spent a lot of time talking about a duty crew in the daytime. But of course, his numbers were way different than yours, and I'm not, I'm not discounting your numbers, but he was more in the ballpark of fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour for a couple of three people. But I prefer either a full-time service or a duty crew here. I don't wanna lose the fire department either, but I do not want the public to feel overconfident that one firefighter is going to be able to protect them in the way that we, I think they deserve to be protected. Just like when they called for a police officer, that, that officer is there, if not immediately, quickly, and that officer is backed up by other police officers. So, I am, I'm reluctant to offer this one firefighter solution, but we hire a chief and an administrator to give us their opinions on that, but that's where my concern lies.
I would, mine has always been to be more towards the duty crew. Like, I do feel more comfortable with two or three people versus just one person. After our last meeting, I even asked Chief Thompson, who's gonna cover if this person's sick? Who's gonna cover if this person takes vacation? And he gave the same answer to me that he gave us tonight. But I'm concerned, what if he's on vacation and this person gets in a car accident, and then they're not here? There's a lot of scenarios where this could go a little haywire. So, to me, it would be, it would be an investment that I would be behind to have more of a duty crew versus one full-time person. The reason I even suggested that is because I don't remember what the cost evaluation of that was, to pull that forward, right? Like, what does that cost us? Can we hire three firefighters, all at part-time, and have a schedule? Like, how does that look?
I can tell you right now, easily, because this is what I do at work, this is what I do for a living, we are having extremely difficult time getting firefighters, and every fire professional department around is doing the same thing. It is extremely difficult to get them.
And is it true, Chief, just, you know, know what I hear, that at one time, a firefighter might have went with a full-time department in East Peoria, or Peacon, or Peoria, and stayed there? Are firefighters today more mobile, full-time?
Absolutely. They are not staying for careers at those departments. Absolutely not. They are leaving, without a doubt.
What about pension? Does that, would that appeal to anyone? Is that a-
Well, of course it does, but, I mean, it's not, it's not making the guy stay by any means. We're, at work, a starting firefighter, where I work is twenty-three dollars an hour, and we can't get people in. I'm down twelve guys. I have sixty-four total, and I'm down twelve right now, currently, today.
You have sixty-four firefighters?
Correct. And there are, we're down twelve. It's extremely difficult. I would hate to venture to guess what we would have to pay per hour to get people. Probably in the twenty-five to thirty-dollar-an-hour range, and that, that's astronomical.
Chief?
Go, go ahead.
Do you have more to say?
No, no, no.
I just had a quick question, a little off that. This is just from my own personal knowledge, and I understand, I'm not asking you to carve this in stone, I'm just curious. Well, a house in the village catches on fire. Someone goes to look at it, determines, yes, this isn't, this isn't a grease, grease burning in the kitchen, this is an actual fire. Pull the Mavis box. On the average, about how long is it before someone is there fighting that fire?
If Engine Tens and Quarters?
Sure.
I would say within five minutes.
Within five minutes? But then you're going to Peoria, you're contacting Peoria, they're coming-
Within five minutes.
Within five minutes. Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, the, so, and I'll build off your example, Trusty Goff. So, in, if we, if we have that five minutes, your response time to a fire in this locality, you know, probably ranges, what, three to five minutes, yourself?
Me personally?
Or the, the department?
Uh, maybe a little longer, depending, at night, you know, in the middle of the night, I gotta get up, I gotta drive to the station, I gotta get, you know, my gear on. I would say probably closer to, you know, maybe six to nine.
Okay. Okay. So, so that, that's it? That's, that's the whole-
And the other scenario I wanted to throw into that, just the other night, it was a perfect example, or yesterday, we had a fire at Walgreens down here. It wasn't anything significant, but the first thing I asked, and it was during the day, the first thing I asked was, soon as the PD gets on scene, have them tell me exactly what's going on. Now, if they would've told me the building was on fire, I would've pulled the Mavis box then, but they didn't. They told me it was just cardboard on the back dock, the employees had already got two extinguishers on it, it's just smoldering. So, I didn't do anything, but just sent the engine down there code two, which is no lights and sirens. So, the PD is helping us out immensely on this. And I, the other thing I wanted to, there are two occasions that I know of in the past year where the PD actually put out the fire. One was just right over here, a block away, right by where you live, Mayor. The trash can was on fire in the, in the lady's bedroom, and the PD put the fire out. They took, we provide them with fire extinguishers, they take them in and put the fire out themselves. So, the PD is helping out immensely on all these calls.
Well, the working relationship with the fire department and police department has never been better, and I've been there twenty-eight years, so I wanna point that out as well, and it's just a testament to his leadership. But the police and fire work very well together. They really do. I mean, the communication, the teamwork, it's something I haven't seen since I've been here, so Chief is exactly right. It's just, it's just a team effort, so.
Chief Thompson, is there a state regulation that says the fire department has to be at a house within a certain amount of time?
No, no law, no, uh-uh.
What's the-
The, there is a NFPA standard.
What's the, what's that standard?
Well, it depends on if it's volunteer or professional.
Okay. What's the volunteer standard?
Uh, I believe it's ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Have we ever fallen outside of that, ten minutes?
For a fire?
Yeah.
I, I, not that, since I've been here.
Okay. So, we've met, we've met the standard. So, regarding public safety and the established standards, we've, we've met it every time?
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Well, we've had a lot of dialogue. I'm not sure that we've arrived at a-
So, Trusty Wiggington had said that tonight, we needed to make a decision.
Tonight, tonight is, and I, I wanna just say that, and this is what we talked about at the last meeting as well, and I know, Chief Thompson, you, you have a person in mind, but because this is a, because this is a public body, and because this is, we would need to advertise for this position, we would, there would need to be an interview process if we continued with the status quo. So, as far as timeline is concerned, it's my understanding, and I think, Chief, it's your understanding as well, if we were to go the status quo route, we needed to put plans in motion ASAP.
That's, that's true.
So.
Correct. If that's the route, first thing, as from my understanding, Chief Thompson already has a job description ready for me. We would post, we would set a deadline, obviously, accept applications, start the interview process, and that's gonna take time. So, if that's the route, if that's the route the board decides to go, that would, that would be, I should say, the calendar of events that need to, need to occur, so.
Can we, we take a show of hands to proceed? I mean, I'm ready to start the hiring process.
Well, we can't vote on it, it's not, but we'll take a consensus if there's-
And I, I don't think this requires, does it require a vote to advertise for a position that's really already-
Not, not just to advertise.
Right.
The board would vote on, you know, approving a position and-
We can get a consensus tonight of what your preference is, and what direction you'd like the administrator to go.
I'd say, let's hire, let's put the ad out, let's get started on, get the ball rolling on hiring somebody.
I would, I would like to retain the status quo, start the hiring process, and then evaluate going forward.
Is there anyone else on that?
I agree with starting the, you know, starting to look for this person. I need a little bit more time to tell you exactly what my thoughts are, but I definitely think we can't waste any more time and find ourselves in a, in a dangerous situation. So I agree with starting the process to put the feelers out there for someone.
All right, there's three of you, so that's enough. We'll, we'll move in that direction. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, we'd be at miscellaneous. Cancelled the meeting during July, so if any of the committee chairs would like to bring up anything on your committee, now would be a good time to do so. Or any miscellaneous business you may have, committee chairs?
Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to, and I, I know you and I have spoken a little bit about this issue, and, you know, I keep ringing this bell kind of quietly. But next year's 125, and, you know, so, hey, get ready. So I, I would like us to start, you know, I hate to follow, like, hey, we got a plan for the fire department, and then I'm saying, hey, let's plan for a party. But, but yeah, so 125 is creeping up on us. I, I think I have some people in mind that I, that I would like to serve on a committee. I will say this, previously at, from my research, and I've done a little bit, at the 75th and the 100th, the committee was not really board member-led. It was more community members and members, I think, and I think it's not a bad idea to get tie-in from the community. I think that's going to be, as opposed to from the 75th and maybe even the 100th, it's so much more difficult to get buy-in from the community. I, I think there's a lot more distractions than there were, you know, 50 years ago. And, you know, there's a new, you know, TV show on HBO, or there's a new thing, something. So how do we, how do we get people involved in their community? So I would really like for this to be community-led, and maybe having other members of other taxing bodies involved as well. We, we met one of them tonight that, that is one of our, our taxing bodies. So I, I think we, we just need to kind of prod the fire a little bit on this.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. We just had a conversation about difficulty getting volunteers for a fire department, and it's even harder to get people involved. But I think people love the heights, and they're, I like, we all like a celebration. I'm, I'm all for this. But we need to get some people to step up. I would be happy to bring before you names and appoint a committee. Someone is going to have to lead this effort. And, you know, I was around for the last celebration. One thing that's different is the Pabst Brewery, that Pabst supported about everything in town at that time financially and through lots of volunteers. We no longer have that to rely on, but we still have people who love the community would, would support that. But I think we need to identify people to serve. I think we need to identify a day or a weekend when you want to have this celebration. And a few things need to happen, but one or two or three people need to lead this effort. And I mean, we've seen that done, whether it be through Bridge to Bridge, or whether it be through the art fair, or whether it be through the farmer's market. It's normally one or two people stepping up and making it happen, and that's what we need here.
Well, and I, I think that, and you mentioned some really good activities, and I, and certain people that have done that, that have led the charge in those sorts of things. And I think it might be wise to piggyback off some of that. And what I'm thinking is maybe the Taste of the Heights that already get a lot of people out here. One example that I think of too is the Dunlop days. That is a village up there to our north that have, you know, a kind of a carnival every year. And, you know, seeing if we could get with that group and see if they'd be willing to set up shop here in the village, maybe on some land that is completely vacant. I don't know, but that would be an option too. But there's a lot, you know, obviously, this is, I'm just kind of shooting off the hip here, but I, I think there's a lot of things that we could do. So thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else?
I have a quick update for everybody on the water main issue on Lake Street that has gone out, been advertised. I believe we're having a bid opening on the 27th of July here at Villachal. And it's definitely moving forward. That should be available to approve and then get that approved so they can get it started as soon as they possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
So it seems to be there's been a lot of these, like, brown water complaints since some of this shattering of those mains have happened. I know you have some of the flow, like, turned off, but could that be affecting any of it?
Yes, it could.
Because you, I mean, it was explained to us that those mains are just crumbling, correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, this, I mean, this issue with not being able to feed across the golf course currently could be causing some of that, yes.
I think sometimes there's a, not a radius, the system is all interconnected, correct?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Yes, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? While we're talking about water, Mr. Aldridge, I'm going to ask if you'd just remind everyone both here and at home that we've hired a water consultant to deal with a lot of these issues. If you'd give us an update on that and anything else on your plate lane?
Sure. Yeah, as far as the water, we have received preliminary drafts of the capital plan, so the program per year and which projects may be proposed. So the next step, and we're beginning that step, is the financial side. So where are we at now with finances and how much, you know, can we afford to do per year? And so these, these two things work together, so they're interrelated. So that's kind of where we're at with the program. They've just, our consultants have just requested financial information from us to put that together.
Will, will they at some point advise us on the brown water?
We haven't requested that, but I mean, that could be a part, they, they are able to do that. I mean, we could provide information.
I think we, we need that, so please ask for that.
But, you know, most of these, you know, once we get into a replacement capital program, that should deal with the brown water issues if we can identify where these mains are bad and perhaps corroding and things like that. So it's, it's a part of it.
I understand the need to bring the consultant in to give us an analysis on where we need to be fee-wise, to well-position us for the future. But the brown water is an urgency that we really need a consultant to tell us about now. I get complaints
Every day.
Daily about brown water. I have people filling up little swimming pools of brown water. I think it should be order number one to get a consultant or someone in here to tell us what the brown water is. I think every time we have someone complain about brown water, I think we should take a water sample so that at least this board knows why the, the customer's getting brown water. I would like to know. I would like to know the composition of the water and exactly why it's brown, because that's the questions I get asked.
Trust, I'm sorry, don't want to interrupt you, but one thing I will say is you say you get a lot of complaints. People do not call the water office.
I understand that.
Let us know. We've had maybe between five and 10 complaints in the last couple weeks. Normally, we do not get complaints. This is completely amplified. I think a lot of the issues are internal plumbing in the housing.
That, that's why...
And nobody wants to believe it.
Right.
I'm not saying this water department is perfect.
No.
Please, don't take that the wrong way. But people need to call the water office if they have a water issue. If your cable is not working, you call the cable company. You don't post it and say, "My cable's off."
Oh, people post funny about Comcast. But what I'll say is you'll be hard-pressed. I know, has anyone here ever seen anyone complain about brown water outside of Peoria Heights? I have not.
Yes.
I have not. Well, not to, I mean, I get pictures emailed to my village email account. I see them on Facebook. People text me them. And none of them have ever lived in Peoria. None of them have ever lived anywhere besides Peoria Heights. So I don't like saying it's their plumbing, and I don't think it's anything about the fire department. Chris, I, I mean...
It's the water department.
Water department, what did I say?
The fire department.
Fire department, all right. Superintendent Chandler, I have every confidence in you. I have every confidence in the, the water department. But obviously, we have infrastructure issues. So if we're going to say blame it on these people's plumbing, I would like to know the composition of the water so that I know when they come back to me pissed off, that I can say, "Hey, you know, this is what the water test was. This is why your water is brown." There's just so many pictures I see of brown water. So either, and I know people that live in the East Bluff, which is one of Peoria's oldest neighborhoods, they never have brown water. So either the Peoria Heights has the oldest plumbing of, in the tri-state area, or there's something else going on. I would just like more information so that I can respond to people.
I can find that the East Bluff also is getting, they have a water treatment facility, like a pure
I under-
-system that comes at a cost that our people are not...
I understand that.
I know.
Oh, I totally get that.
Apple samples.
I, I, no, I totally get that. But, but still, I don't want to be blaming it on their plumbing when it is the unfiltered water that we're giving them.
Sure, I, I agree.
Yeah, I don't want, I understand it's not apples to apples. I get it, that they have American water, it's filtered and all that. But that's what we should respond to these people with, not that it's your plumbing.
But I think Superintendent Chandler's point is if they call the water office, someone from Public Works will visit the house.
Absolutely, 100%.
Do we take a water sample?
No.
Okay.
We go over there, and 99% of the time, they run their water for five to 10 minutes, and it's cleared up.
I understand that, but they, they don't want brown water to begin with.
Right, but the, I'm not saying this is every issue, but a lot of times, it's because their hot water heater has sediment built up in it. Every time they turn it on, it's brown water. So they think the water is brown everywhere. Is their neighbor's water brown? Is their neighbor's water brown? Usually not. And if it's not, it has been stated in the past, "I can't give you clean water and you dirty water. I have no control of it."
I understand that, but there's not an infinite amount of brown water in the system. So say there's 10,000 gallons of brown water in the system, once that 10,000's gone, not everyone is going to see it. And I had a water system, filtration system put in my house. I got a probably about, I don't know, two feet of pipe between the house and a pre-filter that was white when it was installed. Within six weeks, that thing was black. Okay? There's only this much copper piping, or whatever the piping is, between my house and that pre-filter. So I know it's not my internal plumbing causing that to be black.
Well, there's another 70 feet of pipe that's coming from our main to your house.
I, I get that. No, I totally understand that.
Which has been laying in the ground for 80 years.
I understand that. No, I, I get it. I get it.
This is why the village has decided, you as a board have decided to go with water and current, so we can help figure this out.
Well, we were just told that, we were told that brown water isn't even being discussed.
I would... Well, that is part of the...
It's a part of the, it always is. I mean, rusty water is because of stagnant water, period, usually, in systems. So we'll look at that, and I would encourage folks to call in so we can track geographically if, where that's happening. So that would give us an indication of where we may have stagnant water in the system. So I think those are the main, that really is the main issues that we can, we can address.
Another-
We have a hydrant flushing program, I believe. That helps, you know, keeping the water circulating. We may have some stub lines, I think, that we will look to circulate and things like that. So those are all part of what we're looking at.
Another aspect of, of brown water is water flow in the mains tends to go in the same direction all the time because of demand. And as Mr. Chandler was stating, with the country club, that line that crosses the country club shut off, that can change the direction of flow. When that happens, you're going to have a much likelier chance of getting brown water. Now, the fact that we don't have a filtration system, there's not much we can do about that.
No, I understand. I'm not blaming the, I'll say fire department, I'm not blaming the water department. Listen, I have complete confidence in Superintendent Chandler. It's just when we know that there's factors that cause brown water, and we tell people when they call in, "It's your plumbing..."
That's not what happens.
Well, I understand, but that's-
That is not what happens.
I'm not assuming, that's what they tell, I'm not assuming, that's what they tell me. But that's, that's when they get irritated.
Right, and, and I understand that because they don't want to believe that it is, but...
Right. No, I get it.
What they check, I, you know, I, I was there. We go, there's a brown water complaint at this house, you go talk to the people on either side.
Right.
Are they getting brown water? If they are, there's a problem. Yeah, that's in the main.
I get it.
Almost every time, it's not. It's that house. And so they, as Superintendent Chandler stated, they have X number of feet of pipe laying in the ground.
I get it.
And then it goes into their system, which, you know, what, what kind of piping do they have? I have an old house, you know, the water lines have been replaced inside the house, but they would have all been galvanized like years ago. And, and, you know, it can be a mess.
Superintendent Chandler, the brown water issue, is this, is this, I mean, I understand how it might have effect on laundry and things like that, but as far as a aesthetic issue or a toxic issue, is this brown water presenting a health hazard to the village residents?
No, it is not.
Aesthetically, it's, it's not great.
It doesn't look great.
Yeah.
Believe me, this is, that is not what we want
Yeah.
...to come out of people's faucets. That is not our goal, never has been. I would like to state, I don't appreciate that somebody thinks that every other area, every other water department in the tri-state area has perfectly clean water. That's an unacceptable statement.
They don't.
That's simply not true. Just because you don't see them doesn't mean that it's...
I, I think the comment I made was, I've never ran into, into anyone else that, and I know quite a lot of people that live around that have ever complained about brown water. But you can't walk out your door in Peoria Heights without someone saying they've had brown water. That was the comment I made. I didn't say no one had it.
Well, I, I would like you to, if you take the time, call Illinois America and see if they get water issue calls.
Brown water?
Guaranteed they get water issue calls. Absolutely.
All right, we're going to move on to any other subjects. Mr. Aldridge, we were at, anything else you're working on, you can tell us about?
The other is, together we play park. We're working on that. We've ordered the equipment for it because we know there's a substantial lead time. We're still working on kind of the layout of the park, how things will lay in that area. So that's where we're at now, working on that design.
On that issue, so we've ordered, we've, we've ordered the equipment?
Yes.
Okay. Where do we stand on the advocates of access?
That I do not know. As far as, I think they were, yeah, as far as the total fundraising, I'm...
As far as how we would receive the money, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, they are going to, right, they're going to send the money to us. Where, that was the last email that I saw.
Okay, we got it.
Yes, yes.
I apologize. We, we did get, the board asked for a, kind of a confirmation from advocates for access.
Right.
Yeah, we did receive that
Okay, okay.
Before the contract was, was signed. Yes, I probably...
Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
All right. Any other miscellaneous? We'd be at payment of the bills. I've asked for a motion to pay the bills.
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion, or any question on any of the bills? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The bills are paid. We'd be at the treasurer's report. Madam Clerk.
As of the end of June, in the village-controlled accounts, there was $6,070,422.55. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,873,861.70.
You've heard the treasurer's report. I'd ask for a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion, any questions on the report? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Wiesenberg?
Aye.
All right, the treasurer's report is approved. We have an executive session scheduled. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. We'll come back here and we'll not conduct any other business tonight other than to adjourn. So I would ask for a motion to go into executive session under 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C 11 pending a probable litigation.
I move to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Madam Clerk.
Trustee DeVore is not present. Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Wiesenberg?
Aye.
All right, we are going into executive session again. We will return here only to adjourn.
So it's been rough. The last 30 days have been... So, it's been rough. The last 30 days have been rough.
Okay, we are back in regular session. There's no further business to come before the board. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn?
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was like, how could you?